Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Publics Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and Starleger newspapers, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district's website. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Here.
Mrs. Miga.
Here.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Here.
Mr. Shoner.
Here.
Mrs. Dai.
Here. The meeting is open to the public for comment on items on the agenda. Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
It's been awhile.
It has been awhile.
It's been a really long time.
Yes.
Four weeks worth.
Yes.
With Snowmageddon or whatever the last problem was, right?
Snowmageddon.
Yeah, there's more on the way.
Yes, yeah, they're supposed to, yeah.
Really?
Tonight.
Quick, get the milk, get the eggs.
What do you mean, tonight? Tomorrow night.
Tomorrow night, me tomorrow night, yeah.
Tomorrow night.
Yes, there's more.
Guys are making people panic at home.
It snows tomorrow.
I guess that's what happens when you don't have time to look at the weather all day.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Or watch too early. Listen to the news. Alrighty, um, okay, well, it's been a little while.
Yes.
But still, luckily, the agenda's not too horribly long, thank you, appreciate it. So we'll try not to be here too ridiculously long. Committee reports. Anyone?
Um, trying to think, I went to a South End FSA meeting.
At some point?
I did.
It seems like forever.
Yeah, it feels like it was forever ago, um, and it was just, it was great, it was very informative, um, gosh, I left my notes at home, I'm so sorry, FSA people, but it was a great, um, South, they have a lot of really wonderful things going on, I was really impressed, and I didn't bring my notes, I'm really upset about that, I'm so sorry.
We'll be back next week.
Yeah, oh yeah, we'll be back next week.
Oh yeah, we do, we do, we do, next week.
That's true, actually, you can have a few over.
Because I took very good notes, so.
That's totally fine, absolutely.
Yes, so next week, I promise.
Okay.
Because they really do have a lot of great stuff going on.
Excited, wait, okay. And South End is actually hosting a coffee talk in April, the date to be determined, right? You're taking it on the road there.
Oh, if, if new dates.
It is, okay. Ms. Miga will be joining.
Yes, I will.
Yes, I will.
Yes.
Yes.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Okay. Anybody else?
Uh, the Black and Gold Club had a meeting, um, I don't know, a couple weeks ago.
Before, why don't I remember that?
And we were able to thankfully get some excited parents to come in, step up, and hopefully help keep that club going, up at the high school, so, we're on a roll here.
We were there as parents.
Okay.
Yes.
Glad to hear it.
It was very informative.
And so, and also, just FYI for the public and everything, is that this Thursday, Friday, Saturday is, well, I don't want to steal our, uh, maybe I would not, won't say anything, okay, I'm not going to say anything.
Yes.
I'll let our rep do the rest. So yes, I'm sure, I got nothing.
Really? You sure?
Yeah, no, um, Nicole covered South End.
It's budget season, my friend, what have we been up to?
Well, I figured you were going to do that, I figured you were, you know, I was going to let the board president do that.
Oh, well, thank you kindly. Yes, it's that time of year again, and, uh, and we are in our finance committee meetings, and we are, we had our first meeting for the budget, and it was, you know, as depressing as usual.
Depressing.
Trying to do a lot with a little, and, uh, and those conversations will continue for the next few weeks, and then we will come with a budget that
Right.
We will present, so, stay tuned, so, we only had our first meeting so far, so.
First meeting, but it was a lot of work, and it was, you know.
And while it was our first meeting, obviously
Right.
The district has been dealing with it for
Right.
A much longer period of time, it's just the finance committee jumps in at this point, and, uh, and starts talking about where we are.
Right, and how we get to that point.
Exactly.
Yes.
So stay tuned.
Great.
I think that's it for that, um, and then this is when we have our high school rep.
Right.
We have an alternate this evening, so welcome.
My name is Gia Perikas. Today, Nick Splendoria, the president, was not able to make it because he is currently at Curtains rehearsal.
Yeah, excuses, excuses.
A guy who has stuff.
Rehearsal, yep.
Yes, they're very busy preparing for this weekend, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, they will have four performances, two on Fri- uh, Saturday, one Thursday, and one Friday. Um, at the end of January, the music department has had a lot of success, the Music Matters program won a few awards for arts education activism, and we saw Nicholas Splendoria make a finalist at Stand for his dramatic monologue, Nick and Francesca Catalano make finalist for comedic scene, and Francesca Catrone won first place in her musical solo category, also Peter Corso, Julia Jablonsky, Emily Simon, Ava Silverman, Nick- Nicholas Splendoria, and Morgan Tenza all made it to the Region One Honor Choir, and the concert was on January 26th. February 9th, the lacrosse teams hosted a dodgeball competition as a fundraiser, as a fundraiser, and they had a very large turnout. February 11th, the Red Cross Club hosted their second blood drive of the year, and there was around 16 students and a number of faculty members that helped donate blood. February 13th, the Interact Club held their annual Cupid's Cafe fundraiser, but this year they did a little different, they hosted it for the Just One Africa, which helps supply clean water to Kenya and another needy country who need water, we sold bracelets and gave them out. February 11th to the 15th, the OSCO Council helped, held the annual Penny Awards competition, and the prize was extra time for the winners' lip sync dress rehearsal, so they'll get extra time. The sophomores won with a whopping 44,000 points, and all of the grades are gearing up for the competition, they're getting ready and practicing. February 22nd, the freshman class held an assembly, which is part of a three-part series on making good decisions, and the impact on their decisions in high school, and how those can have a big impact on their lives. On this day, the drama class held their fully student-produced show Cafe Murder, and the cast of Curtains gave a preview at the fundraiser for the music department. On February 23rd, Morgan Tenza made it to the All-State Travel Chorus, and she had her concert down at the NJ Pack in Newark. On February 2nd, 27th, is the day that the mid-marking period report comes out for the third marking period, and the third marking period ends March 29th. February 28th to March 2nd, this weekend, the cast of Curtains is holding, is hosting a murder mystery, which will perform four shows, Thursday, February 28th, and Friday, March 1st at 7:00 PM, and Saturday, March 2nd at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM. On March 7th, the art students at Cedar Grove High School will be showcasing some pieces at Cedar Beans Coffee Shop, and it's a nice way to showcase our talented students and how they can get involved in the community. And movie night, which was planned for February, got moved due to the inclement weather, and we are looking to reschedule sometime in March.
Do you know when Lip Sync is, or you have no clue yet?
I believe it's March, toward the end of March.
Great. Awesome. So two things, thank you, one I want to point out, a special thank you to Scott Chesney, who was the guest speaker for the freshman class.
Thank you. Special thanks to Scott Chesney, who was the guest speaker for the freshman class, he comes often to Cedar Grove, I think I've heard him be referred to as an honorary panther, and that's very true, he does a lot, um, for Cedar Grove, and we appreciate that. The second thing is dodgeball was a lot of fun, and I might have just maybe committed the board to having a team against the town council next year, I'm just saying, I might have done that, so.
Not intentionally.
You know, it's all in the spirit of fundraising, so.
That means I'm going to be on duty.
And giving back. You're not on the town council, what are you talking about? Oh, yeah, well, yeah, you have to play for lacrosse, yes, and then you would have to say.
And the girls' lacrosse coaches won.
Yes, they did.
Double duty.
They had cool shirts, they did, they did, they did a great job.
So I might have just committed us to that, I'm just saying, and, uh, and I'm just saying that we will totally beat the town council, so I'm just saying that too, but, you know. That's pretty cool.
Right?
That would be great.
You know how to throw, right?
Uh, yeah, I want to use real volleyballs.
Well, now that we have Miga, like, I think, like, we're in good shape, you know?
Totally for that.
So anyway, good times, thank you kindly, just so you know, you don't have to stay for the rest of this, it's totally fine, it's your choice, I'm sure you have homework, so no pressure, honestly, quietly.
Thank you, though.
Thank you, yes, thank you for coming, yes.
And being the alternate, we too, we appreciate that.
It's too bad they don't do anything at the high school.
All right, so we're moving on, and.
Does she just want to go?
Well, yeah, I said she could quietly leave. I'm not going to make a big, like, you know, bye, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye-bye. See, now we're all watching her leave, I said quietly, she goes, what's up? All right, so we're moving on, tonight we have a board presentation, um, the preliminary budget presentations for IT and special services, or we're not doing that first, I don't know what we're doing first, to be honest with you, that's what I read here. So as I've said, we are obviously in budget conversations, and we'll have a series of presentations over the next few weeks on different, right, departments, and this is the first one. So, good evening, Mr. Kenny, how are you?
Is it on? Did you find it? Are you good?
Is it on?
Do you see the, you have the red light?
Yep, it's on.
There you go.
All right, I'm good, thank you for asking. Good evening. Uh, so tonight, we're talking about special ed budget, preface every, every year by saying this is a functional budget, does not include, uh, staffing per se, and increases in staff salary, uh, you know, and stuff like that, this is purely functional, as far as operational for us. So, there are several different areas that I discuss every year, uh, one of them being the out-of-district tuition, so these are for students placed in private schools for the disabled, uh, VOTECs, they're also placed in other school districts as well, other local area school districts, so we have a budget total there, when we add everything up and do our calculations of $2,924, which is an increase of about $20,000, and what I mentioned here is I give you a little bit of reason for that, luckily for us, it's really not that much in the grand scheme of things, and every year, what the state does is they, uh, put out what's called a tentative tuition rate, they allow an increase for that particular private school for disabled to increase their tuition. So, given the fact that we have about 37 students out, anticipated for next year, that's about the increase, a little bit, in each of their tuitions, that, that's what that $20,000 is there for. Related and extraordinary services are any contracted service provider, so not our own, but those that we have to contract with privately to come in or provide services to other students, because it's not necessary to hire a full-time extra OT, so we contract overage, shall we say, overage services. Same thing with physical therapy, uh, some ABA services, behavioral services, audiological, those students that have hearing deficiencies, we have a teacher of the deaf that comes in and provides audiological services, uh, we do have a ner- uh, student requiring nursery services, feeding therapy, and job coaching for our older students that are, um, 18 to 21. Budget subtotal there is $585,000, we're a decrease, actually, this year of $29,400, because there's less services needed, and we are now slowly increasing the ability to, uh, do the services for ourselves in-house. Supply costs, so again, special services, my office, the child study team, uh, we do cover special ed teachers and the therapists, uh, within those supply costs there, uh, the budget there, $22,472, which an increase there is $8,472, which is for FM systems at the middle school, so we do have students that, uh, have diagnoses of central auditory processing, uh, therefore they need what is called an FM system, uh, it's basically a speaker, a teacher wears medallion around their neck, when they do talk, the volume of their voice is projected toward that student, so that they could clearly hear directly what the teacher is saying, so, it's a really important piece of their education, um, as the students move up, what we're trying to do is buy a set of FM systems in the middle school, um, that after next year, we won't need to buy anymore, because there will be a set in each of the grades. Child study team supplies, our IEP direct system is also, uh, in the budget this year, again, $18,300, that's no change from last year. Extended school year, that's a program mandated that we run during the summer, for students that need this particular program to hold off remediation and recuperation of skills, therefore, the budget remains the same with no change from last year. So in essence, the budget summary this year, I'm happy to announce, instructional costs there, $22,472, added district tuition cost, 29, 2.9 million, uh, $585,000 for related services, child study team, $18,000, extended school year, 31, with a functional budget, uh, 3.566496, and that cost will be offset with the IDA grant, it's a federal grant in which we get monies, uh, which we're anticipating to come in around $260,000. The budget itself is relatively flat this year for special ed, which is a good thing, it's the first time I've been actually able to say that in the eight years that I've been doing this. But then again, I preface also that special ed is a fluid cost, because we don't know who's moving in, who's moving out of the district, and we do have to, again, meet their needs as they come in, and do, we have to, so, questions? No, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Are one of you talking about IT?
All right, Mr. DeVita, who apparently plays many roles, will be our guest speaker this evening.
I'm not Jim Walsh, he apologizes for not being able to make it, so I am pinch hitting for him, uh, what he doesn't know is that I cut his budget an extra $100,000 for this presentation, um, but I'll just give some brief PowerPoint slides here, uh, this first slide is for media services, uh, these are all of the, um, subscription services that we use district-wide, Level Data is, um, for, um, it's an automation software for students, for all of our reports that we have, our Genesis and all that, so we can send, um, put it in, together in a good little packet, and then we send it down to the state. Noodle Tools is a resource-based management software, um, that's used for, for the students to create bibliographies and such, and Encyclopedia Subscription is an online school edition for Britannica, um, that the students are allowed to use. Next, we have a repair of technology equipment, um, the budget for this is $15,000, um, over the last five years, we've averaged about $16,000 in spending it here, it varies each year, um, it depends if we have, um, you know, some smart boards or certain computers break down, uh, this is just the, the cost to, um, keep our equipment up and running. Here we have, um, Chromebooks, um, these are lease expenses here, uh, we currently have two leases now, um, our first lease, um, is for $7,387, that's for our, um, high school Chromebook lease, that's for 100 Chromebooks, um, and we are near two of four for that, our next lease is for, uh, middle school, um, that's for 150 Chromebooks, and this last lease is a new, um, proposed lease in our budget, um, we are proposing, um, to try to get, um, grades five through 12, um, in a one-to-one initiative, meaning that every student will have a Chromebook, um, and it's kind of hard to do that all at once, um, you know, we don't want to buy, you know, a thousand Chromebooks, um, the cost of that would be very expensive, um, so we are proposing to do, for next school year in the budget, um, grades five and nine, um, and then those students would, um, keep that Chromebook for the, the four years as they're in the middle school and in the high school, and, uh, we are, um, still discussing if we want to charge a FV for, for that, um, some districts where the students are allowed to take the Chromebooks home, and some charge a FV for the insurance, uh, so if the Chromebook breaks, then the, the insurance is used to, to, um, repair the Chromebook, uh, so we are, um, discussing that in the, the budget committee, um, so, once the final decision is made, um, that'll be, be presented to the public. Next, we have hardware, um, these are, uh, supplies for district-wide for computers, for smart boards and projectors, um, and the budget is $20,000, and an average expense over the last five years is about $30,000, um, and, uh, this is used, um, in, in relation to the, the repair line, um, if we have certain smart boards or something that a breaks down and we're not able to repair it, um, we, we do buy, buy some new equipment, so this is for that line. This line here is $850 in the budget for, um, training for our IT staff, to go to workshops, seminars, and also to travel, um, throughout the, um, the district. And our printers and toner, um, we have $18,000, um, it is a, a big number, uh, we have actually spent, uh, average expenditure the last five years has been about $22,000, um, we are looking to try to curb that a little bit, uh, maybe try to get more people to print to the copy machines, because it's a little bit cheaper, uh, this includes a district-wide, um, every printer, um, to, to, um, repair those. And lastly is our software licenses and services, this is all district-wide, um, information, and the budget is $41,500, and includes all, um, internet filters, software for district-wide, um, student, um, student software, um, we have a shutdown service, which is, um, at the end of the day, we shut down all the computers, um, it's a green initiative to try to save some money, um, and all of our, um, our current servers, we have to support them, um, and antiviruses for all the computers, um, and just all Wi-Fi, and, uh, school TV channel 76, that's, um, to broadcast, uh, the board meeting, um, to everybody, uh, so that's the expense for that. And overall, in summary here, the, um, the budget for technology, um, when you add everything up, it becomes a little over $143,000, and, uh, that is a slight increase, um, from last year, mainly due to the Chromebook lease, um, so this is, um, where it is now in, in the budget. Does anybody have any questions? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you kindly. All right, so we are going to move on, on our agenda. From the offices of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B5?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of January 22nd, 2019. B2 is a motion to approve the treasures report for the month of December and January. B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary report for the month of December and January. B4 is a motion to approve the budgetary transfers for the month of January, and B5 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B6?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
Roll call.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes, but abstain from check number 58, I'm sorry, 058177.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B7 through B19?
So moved.
Second.
B7 is a motion to approve the letter of agreement with AFC Urgent Care for Occupational Health and Urgent Care Services. B8 is a motion to approve the proposal from Lincoln Landscaping for the amount listed. B9 is a motion to approve the use of LRP School to serve as a bus stop for the YMCA of Montclair. B10 is a motion to accept the Cedar Grove Board of Education Comprehensive Annual Financial Report as of June 30th, 2018. B11 is a motion to approve the Fourth Quarter Unemployment Insurance Check listed for the amount listed. B12 is a motion to approve the waiver of the SEMI program for the night, school, for the 19-20 school year. B13 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contracts with the parents of the students listed. B14 is a motion for approval for professional appointment. B15 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Makeout LLC and the Cedar Grove Board, Board of Education. B16 is a motion to accept the generous donation from Joseph McBride in the amount listed to be used towards the purchase of a projector at the, in the high school media center. B17 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Batu Productions and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. And B18 is a motion to approve the 19-20 food service management contract. And B19 is a motion to approve the proposal to allow the qualified wrestlers from Cedar Grove High School to attend the NJ SIAA Individual Wrestling State Championship in Atlantic City from February 28th to March 2nd. Any discussion?
No.
No.
I just want to wish Dom Tifari, uh, good luck, he is our wrestler who will be, um, going to Atlantic City this weekend, so best of luck to him, uh, may he do well.
And also, I wanted to huge thank you to Joe McBride.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, that was just fantastic of him.
Very nice.
Yes.
He continues to give back.
Yes.
All right then, roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. From the Office of the Superintendent of Schools under Personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S16, please?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve the contract of employment between the Board of Ed and Michael J. Featherman for the position of superintendent effective July 1st, 2019, through June 30th, 2024. S2 is a motion to retroactively approve Katie Howland, para-professional at South End for the rate listed. S3 is a motion to accept the resignation of Cheryl Johansson, um, grade-two teacher at North End, um, for purpose of retirement. S4 is a motion to accept the resignation of Sheila Selka, art teacher at the high school for purpose of retirement. S5 is a motion to accept the resignation of Joanne Beaver, uh, principal's administrative secretary at the high school guidance office for purpose of retirement. S6 is a motion to accept the resignation of Susan Amato, para-professional. S7 is a motion to retroactively approve Kristin Masato for supplemental instruction. S8 is a motion to rescind step three and approve step five for John Murphy, assistant girls' lacrosse coach. S9 is a motion to approve the following as substitute teachers for the rate listed. S10 is a motion to approve the following staff member to serve as a substitute SAT prep teacher. S11 is a motion to approve the following as school volunteers. S12 is a motion to approve the following volunteer coaches for the 19 spring athletic season. S13 is a motion to approve Katie Hanlon for the ice hockey trainer stipend. S14 is a motion to approve the following students for classroom observation. S15 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. And S16 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under policies, we have something new we're doing this evening, as far as not reading them all, or we're reading them, but then we won't do a presentation?
Alrighty.
Should we call for coffee?
Yes.
Why should it take that long? Policy committee, have a heavy lift.
So the policy committee, as you see here, met on February, well, it's not February 26th, we met earlier in the month to go through a fairly exhaustive list of policy updates from our provider, Strauss S.M.A., and what we're attempting to do here is summarize those in slide form, just so that you can kind of wrap your head around it a little bit, there's a lot of, a lot of words here. So Policy 2422, Health and Physical Education, has been revised to reflect these changes. Certainly, we're moving away from the core curriculum content standards and any reference to that, so there's some mechanics here, had to clean that up. There's also some other details that were removed that prevent us from There's also some other details that were removed that prevent us from having to revise and re-adopt this policy every so often. That's basically what one and two is all about. Number three, districts now must provide at least twenty minutes of daily recess for students in grades K through five. We were made aware of this last year, and we've discussed with the board and our administrative team how we're going to handle that. We're okay in pre-K through four. In fifth grade, we're working out a strategy to accommodate this new requirement. So we'll be okay. We're talking about looking at time during the lunch period and splitting that up and allowing kids to be more active. And what's wrong with that? Right? And lastly here, districts must include instruction once during middle school on the social, emotional, and legal consequences of distributing and soliciting sexually explicit images through electronic means. So we will do that through our Health and Physical Education instructional program. The next policy revision, twenty-six ten, refers to a CUSAC provision, specifically indicator number four, that requires districts such as ours to use more than two sources of data to monitor student achievement. We far surpass that. We have park testing, of course, as everyone else does. We have map testing, Lexia, we've got Dibbles, we've got Star, we've got all kinds of other things that we use to make sure that we're gauging the effectiveness of our programs, initiatives, and strategies. Forty-two nineteen, commercial driver's license in CDC. Now, wait a minute now, how does this pertain to us? We don't have any buses, Mr. Featherman. Well, in fact, you see here on the bottom, we are a school district that requires transportation, and therefore, we use services that require the use of a CDL. So this revision here specifically reflects how drug testing is handled, how those samples are processed and stored, and the like. Policy in Reg fifty-one eleven, eligibility of resident, non-resident students. Interesting revision here, specific to students with F-one visas, foreign students that come to study here for a school year. Now, this is only the high school, grades nine through twelve, but the Board Committee has, of course, agreed that we will admit F-one visa-holding students if they pay full Policy fifty-three three zero point zero four, NREG, administering an opioid antidote. We've talked about some of these changes in another recent policy and regulation update. Some of them are mentioned here. Number one, the opioid antidote is mandated, as Mr. Kenny will tell you, for all districts with a school with grades nine through twelve. We need specialized training for our nurses and other as-to-be-named volunteers. To date, we've had all of our nurses, as well as our district athletic trainer, trained in the administration of the opioid antidote. Number three, recipient of antidote must be transported immediately after the antidote has been administered, symptom-free or not. Number four, school nurse or volunteer who administers the opioid acting in good faith will be covered by Good Samaritan laws, of course. Now, here's where it gets a little sticky. A school district with a school with grades nine through twelve, that would be us, is required to have a school nurse or staff member trained to administer an opioid antidote, and get this, at all school-sponsored functions that take place in the school or on school grounds adjacent to the school building at any time. As I mentioned there, this requirement will be challenging for school districts. We don't have a plan worked out just yet, and neither does anybody else for that matter. This is a challenging and unfunded mandate, and we're going to put our heads together and figure out how best to handle all of those activities going on within our high school after hours. You know, we do have site management people that are on for many of the events. We have club advisors that are often present. So perhaps we're looking at our list of our club advisors at the high school, certainly our coaches, and others will probably have to be trained in administering this antidote. So we'll work with our district physician and figure out how this is going to work out. We'll figure it out. Fifty-three thirty-seven, service animals. We don't talk much about service animals, but lately, if you've been paying attention to our newsletters and things, we've had some service animals coming into the district. The kids simply love them, and so does our staff. So there are two things here. A district may not require an individual with a disability using a service animal to carry liability insurance. Interesting. Secondly, a district is not responsible to pay for or provide a handler to aid the individual with a disability in the control of a service animal. What is reasonable is that we provide assistance, for example, in helping that animal relieve him or herself outside. Policy fifty-seven fifty-six, transgender students. There's been a lot of action taken in this area, so bear with me, there's a couple of slides' worth of information here, important information. So here's the guidance in this policy. Number one, a school district shall accept a student's asserted gender identity, parental consent is not required. And that's different from the most recent Strauss S. May policy recommendation. Number two, in the event a parent objects to the admire's student name change request, the district should consult the board attorney regarding the minor student's civil rights and protections under the law. Number three, the principal or designee during an initial meeting with the student should also discuss with the student and any other individuals at the student's request the risks associated with the student's transgender status being inadvertently disclosed. Now, when might that happen? You know, sometimes there's an investigation going on, might be HIV, might be affirmative action, where that information may have to be disclosed to some of the parties. You can understand the sensitive nature of that, should that not be openly known. If a student has expressed a preference to be called by a name other than their birth name, permanent student records containing the student's birth name should be kept in a separate confidential file. This file should only be shared with appropriate school staff members after consultation with the student. A separate file containing records bearing the student's chosen name may also be kept. With respect to gender segregated classes or athletic activities, including intramural and interscholastic athletics, all students must be allowed to participate in a manner consistent with their gender identity. And lastly, all students are entitled to have access to restrooms, locker rooms, and changing facilities in accordance with their gender identity to allow for involvement in various school programs and activities. Further, non-transgender students should also be afforded the option to use a private facility, such as a unisex facility or the nurse's restroom, should the student feel uncomfortable. So there's a lot to this. We'll be pushing this out to our staff and to our administrative team, make sure that we're all on the same page. There's a lot here. Policy in Reg seventy-four forty. Simply put, this, this is a revision to what came out last year in terms of our school safety specialists. Prior to now, it had to be an administrator that was designated as the district school safety specialist. Now, it could be an administrator or a faculty member. Perhaps a teacher or a paraprofessional, maybe a retired police officer or an EMT that has a whole lot more knowledge about school safety than, say, I do, or Mr. Kenny, who happens to be our school safety specialist. So now, it can be anyone on your staff, which I think is a sensible revision. Memorials. This policy guide eighty-eight sixty relates to a flag code that states that American flags should not be flown at half-staff unless directed by the president or the governor. Now, what has happened over time is that local municipalities have gone ahead and made their own decision locally to fly flags at half-staff in recognition of perhaps a local hero or someone who's, you know, endeared to the community. That is no longer permitted, well, it's never been permitted, I should say, but there's no penalty for doing it. This policy reinforces the flag code, that that should not be done unless the president or the governor issues the order. The last handful of policies and regs is just cleaning up semantics. It's making sure that our, well, I'll read it to you. Pursuant to the DOE, the Electronic Violence and Vandalism Reporting System, what we've known as the EVVRS, internally, we know that well, we've been dealing with it for years, and the HIBITP system that carries our HIV documents, okay, has now been replaced with what's called the Student Safety Data System, the SSDS. And so that needs to be reflected in all of these policy and regulation guides. Okay? So that's what that says, and that makes it real easy for us. Any questions on any policy or regulation updates?
I have a question.
Yes.
On the opioid antidote for school-sponsored events.
Yes.
What happens if there is an event in our facilities and it's not sponsored by the school? Like, as far as, like, let's say the rec department has use of our fields, or we rent out the auditorium. Do we have a requirement?
We do not.
Okay.
Has to be associated with the school district.
Okay.
So... I mean, I could see that they may try to do that down the road, too, but honestly, it's hard enough for us to figure out a way to cover our own...
No, absolutely, I agree. That's why I was asking.
Yeah. As of now, it's just...
Seems difficult enough.
Yeah. It's just school district-related, or as they say, all school-sponsored functions. Thank you.
And it's unfunded. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I like the electronic version, I'll say.
Not bad, huh?
No, I like that. All right, so, under policies, can I have a motion for S seventeen?
So moved.
Second.
S seventeen is a motion to approve the first reading of the following policy updates and revisions that we deter. Any discussion?
Nope.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under contracts, can I have a motion for S eighteen?
So moved.
Second.
S eighteen is a motion to approve the following contracts for special education student listed as recommended by the Director of Special Services for the eighteen-nineteen school year. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under curriculum, can I have a motion for S nineteen?
So moved.
Second.
S nineteen is a motion to approve the following curriculum writing for the eighteen-nineteen school year, not to exceed the twenty hours per grade level at the rate listed. Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. I'm seeing none.
So quick with that, Gav.
You know, you gotta be quick. So, we're taking it on the road next week. We are going to be meeting with our friends at the town council. It was just about a year ago where we had our first joint meeting, which I think went well, and we hosted. And so, we have been invited to their meeting next Monday. So we will be at the municipal building, and the meeting will be at seven, and we are excited about that. We look forward to that. And it's all of us going, right? Mr. DeVita's coming, everybody?
Yes.
Okay, just checking.
You're invited.
So, the more the better, yeah, absolutely. And it really gives us an opportunity to talk as a wider group on things that kind of concern the town as a whole. I mean, obviously, it's, you know, we do a lot with the town council in terms of working together, and it's good to have that dialogue with them, so...
Absolutely.
And it seemed a lot easier to pick a date this year than last year. So, I think we learned if we have it on one of our actual meeting dates, it seems to work well.
Right.
So... And then, we won't be done seeing each other because the following night, we're back here next Tuesday, same time, seven-thirty, and then before you know it, it will be March nineteenth, and we'll be back here again. We go from not seeing each other for a long time to nonstop. Anyway, anything else? All right. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DiChiara.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pervulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Shoner.
Aye.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Meeting is over. Everyone have a good evening.